Ready?
This regular council meeting, uh, Monday, November twenty first, underway.
United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, the ruling justice for all.
Go call.
Mayor Lachlan.
Here.
Councilperson Sexton.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Dean. Goodweiler.
Here.
Goleman.
Yeah.
Dean. Thank you.
Uh, motion please.
Move.
Second, Nick. The consent agenda consists of the minutes from our previous meeting in November seventh. Um, a liquor license for the Down Under, liquor license renewal, there's DRAM still pending. We can approve it. Pending that. A special event permit, permit for Christmas past, twenty twenty-two, in two weeks. And claims of November seventh. Motion, anyone?
So moved.
On next, the special one. Hearing none, so vote please.
Councilperson Miller.
Yes.
Sexton. Stulman. Dean. Dean.
Yeah.
Goodweiler.
Yeah.
I'm trying.
All right, we have a public hearing. On the intent.
Public communication.
Oh. First, before a public hearing.
Do I have to gabble out?
Never had it.
Never mind. Um. Presentations, communications, open forum, got it. Um, if anyone would like to address the council, we'd like to hear you now. You cannot act, but we'd like to hear what you have to say, so is anyone online or in the room to address the council? Yes, that's a no, so we will move on. Uh, public hearing. Of the intent to vacate Birdie Drive and to dispose of the city's interest in Birdie Drive. Is anyone here to, uh, address that particular issue? Online or in the room? Hearing no comments, I will close the public hearing. And we will move to the second reading of ordinance eight hundred. Providing the general property taxes levied and collected on certain lots in the Meadows. Part four A and part four B. Be paid to a special fund for payments on loans in connection with the West Branch Urban Renewal. Motion, please.
Thank you.
Uh, this is the third meeting, second one. Uh, anyone have anything else saying? All right, go ahead.
Councilperson Sexton.
Yeah.
Goodweiler.
Yeah.
Dean. Dean.
Just do a thumbs up.
Well, yes, do no.
Yeah.
We made another thumbs.
Stulman.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
All right. Resolution twenty-two dash one zero three. Approving the vacation and distolzil of Birdie Drive.
I'm moved.
My only question is, there's another drawing that has this access easement. Is that being adopted or? Um, I think there is a letter. I haven't seen it, but. Pardon?
I did not have a letter. That's all I received was those two documents.
I mean, it's always been included in this. This, uh. Pictures. A twenty foot access easement. So that's part of the legal description. Is that part of the resolution?
We're getting rid of the existing Birdie Drive right away. Which would include that there's an access easement on. We don't.
Let's see something on lot twenty-seven.
Yeah, lot twenty-seven.
It's that second.
The dotted line. Even if you did, how did you end of that? Get back.
But we're, the resolution is doing it, it's just vacating that.
The hatched area.
The hatched area, yes.
All right, any other comments, questions? All right, let's go.
Councilperson Miller.
Yes.
Goodweiler.
Yeah.
Stulman.
Yeah.
Sexton.
Dean.
And Dean. Dean.
Yeah.
Jeff.
Gotcha.
Uh, resolution twenty-two dash one oh four, approving the submission of the city of West Branch, FY twenty-two. Annual Urban Renewal Report. Motion.
Second.
Heidi, did you prepare this or Maggie?
I did.
It's about Maggie's colors and things.
No.
That's the.
It's a, it's a state report that I have to fill in.
I see.
You get, it, it's, uh.
It's all our tip there.
Yeah, it's, it's everything to do with tip in our urban renewal. Districts. Our revenue, our debt.
Question is, is it six hundred and twenty thousand dollars?
For.
Or.
For what?
Pardon?
For what, six hundred and twenty?
Total expenditures.
Yes. And that includes rebates. Um. And anything that we paid with tip revenue.
That'd be LMI, TIF two.
And bonds.
And bonds, correct.
Any, do I get a resolution?
Yep.
Don't leave any questions.
And this is all for last fiscal year. So it's a recap of what happened for FY twenty-two.
Which is payable to. Payable in this fiscal year or?
This was for. Oh, so when you, that's the resolution later where you can look at for, this one goes back, the other one goes forward.
So, right, so FY twenty-two is like first of twenty twenty-one to June thirtieth of twenty twenty-two.
Three years for.
And the tip certification is coming, so yeah.
Collect, you don't pay it out until.
We, uh. That's what the auditor give, takes us from the tip, cause remember, we, we get, we could get more money out of tip, like your general fund, we get it back, you took it off.
Okay, I have nothing else. So I see, um, the, the. Uh, the roundabout, it's part of the Cedar Johnson. Definitely, or we not have that. Hearing that, uh, it's included, yeah, that's on there.
There is a, there was a, I included Cedar Johnson improvements a long time ago in the plan. We haven't spent any money on it yet for a correction, yeah, but it's in the plan already.
Cedar Johnson Road, but it's not, my thing, it's on here, but.
I- i- if you look at the report, there's, if you have a project, you put it in there, but it'll say like no ex, you know, no expenditures.
Well, that means that that is part of the tip district, or we could tip it if we want.
Yeah.
I thought that's what we were gonna do with the.
Next, yes.
Yes.
By the time everything gets done next year, you're correct, we are using tip to pay for some of it, but that won't be until next year.
Once again, this is a report.
Last year.
If you've had Cedar Johnson Road in there a long time.
Yeah.
But not the roundabout.
It's part of the, Main Street and Cedar Johnson Road are both in the tip, so that includes the intersection.
All right. Anybody, anything else? Go ahead.
Councilperson Goodweiler. Uh, Miller.
Yes.
Sexton.
Yeah.
Stulman. Dean. Dean.
Yeah. Yeah.
Twice.
All right, um. Resolution twenty-two dash one oh five, approving the submission of the city of West Branch, FY twenty-two, again. Annual financial report to the state auditor's office.
So the annual, um, finance report is, again, a recap of all of our expenditures and revenues that happened for last year, for last fiscal year.
Second. That's the side wing. Yeah, that's the details, the, the main sheet is. So. Lot of work, right?
Yes, it is a lot of work.
I don't know what I would add or. Comment on, so.
How many hours does it take you to do that?
Many, I, I don't know, days. I'd probably say, I'm be getting to it in probably about two weeks. It's about eighty hours, if not more.
Thank you.
Uninterrupted hours.
Uh, yes, that's correct.
All right, um, I'm ready to move on, so let's, let's vote on this then.
Councilperson Sexton.
Yeah.
Miller.
Yes.
Stulman. Goodweiler. Dean.
Do a thumbs up.
Dean, he's, we lost.
He gone.
Yeah.
Video hasn't gone, but. Friend of the video, and he's got his sound on.
Tom, can you hear us? We lost you, lost your video and microphone.
I guess he's absent.
Yeah, just.
How you do with that?
Well, you saw four, so you're okay, just say, just say, lost, but like a lost contact.
Lost speed.
All right, lost contact.
Lost it.
All right, I think we'll move on, we can consider this next issue of actions. Um, resolution twenty-two dash one oh six, considering the issue of whether excellent wind power in North America should be rebated a portion of the tax implement revenues.
Move. So, no.
No means no.
Thank you much for your work. Um, I consider them remote. Go ahead.
Councilperson Miller.
No.
Goodweiler.
No.
Dean, oh, sorry.
Jeff.
Stulman.
No.
Sexton.
Oh.
And Dean, absent, lost connection. And Max. Oh.
That was long ago. The time, man.
Tom, can you hear us?
Yes. But, but, no.
Okay.
All right, we're gonna move on, twenty-two dash one oh seven, resolution approving certain annual appropriation of payment, payments pursuant to various development agreements. Motion.
Second.
Casings, ALM. EMV holdings. That was just kidding.
Yeah.
Um. Questions, anyone? So we have those one.
Councilperson Sexton.
Yeah.
Miller.
Yes.
Dean.
Yeah.
Goodweiler.
Yeah.
Stulman.
All right, item, item H. Resolution twenty-two dash one oh eight. Operating an internal advance of funds. Motion, please.
Second.
I'm confused on this. Thought we had cash on hand. In a fund. For this.
I can explain it to you, unless you want, Heidi, you wanna go first?
So, this interfund loan is to replace the tip that is gonna drop off for next fiscal year. So, the actual lawsuit, uh, that we're paying with the tip. I'm just gonna drop off, and then another thirty-five thousand dollars for a bond.
The judgment one.
The judgment, yeah. So, in order for us to continue having the same tip askings, we need to, um, ask for this interfund loan.
So this becomes a debt that we can ask.
Exactly.
The reason why we're doing this, if we're really sporadic in our tip, it messes with our general fund, messes with schools' general fund, messes with the county's general fund. So, if, if you're, you're not consistent in what you're asking for, it throws everyone's budget off. Um, so if we were to just not do it, then the school and the county could have an extra, you know, ten, ten thousand, twenty thousand in hand that they think they're gonna get next year, and then they won't.
Thank you. Any other, anyone else? This is an internal, one oh eight. Uh, go ahead, Leslie.
Councilperson Sexton.
Yeah.
Miller.
Yes.
Stulman.
Yeah.
Goodweiler. Dean.
Yeah.
Twenty-two dash one oh nine. Directing to finance officer, certify tax improvement financing debt to Cedar County Attorney. So this is going forward.
Second.
Looking for a total here, but. Can't find it. That's a, there's a string of numbers.
There's really no total, if you look at, I think it's. Thirty to Form two. I mean, that's what, that's what we're, yeah. All available is, I just, I don't know.
Right.
I don't know what.
I see.
That's gonna be. And, uh, it's not including the hundred and fifty thousand dollars either. For the interphone loan that we're asking for.
You won't read that?
I'm sorry.
You won't read that one fifteen?
No, we will.
Yeah, it's fine.
It's on there, it's in the first page. It's, it's just a new asking, so that's why it's in a different page.
Okay, thank you. Let's go ahead and vote.
Councilperson Sexton.
Yeah.
Miller.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Stulman. Goodweiler.
Yeah.
All right, new capital fund, twenty-two dash, resolution twenty-two dash one ten. Establishing a new capital fund. Besides.
Yeah, I was just.
Motion, please.
Yeah.
Second. All right, Eastside Water Main Project, this is.
Yes.
I'm not seeing this. Where? There's seven. No. Okay, that's pretty clear. You've done this before. Go ahead.
Councilperson Goodweiler.
Yeah.
Sexton.
Yeah.
Miller.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Goleman.
Yeah.
All right, a pay estimate, resolution twenty-two dash one eleven. Proving the pay estimate number four. The amount of one hundred sixty-five thousand, nine hundred forty-one dollars and twenty-five cents to Boomerang Corporation for the wastewater treatment facility. Uh, motion, please.
So, move.
That's cheap compared to what's a year ago.
All right, um, anything else, anyone on that subject? Okay, Leslie, go ahead. Go ahead, yeah.
Councilperson Miller.
Yes.
Goodweiler.
Yeah.
Stulman.
Yes.
Dean.
Yeah.
Sexton.
Okay, um. City council meeting schedule, twenty twenty-three. See a few different colors here, so. Monday nights are all blocked out, I don't know what the.
The yellow is, the yellow is city holidays. And the orange are the meetings, so note that in January and February, we have some Tuesday meetings because of the January, uh, the Monday holidays. So you'll be more looking at the orange.
Orange are actual meetings.
Are actual meetings. Does not include special meetings, special meetings will be called upon as needed.
All right. Okay, forward. Um, duly noted, thank you. Budget.
It's a newer, but the city of West Branch does not currently recognize.
Something the millennials demanded, or what?
Yes, it was the emancipation.
Not one at all. Uh, did you know that?
It did. Get it off.
He's, the feds get, the feds and the, the feds and banks get everything off.
This is Monday.
Uh, all right, let's, uh, budget outlook presentation, Adam has the bear. Has prepared a discussion.
I don't know why I moved over here. I thought, I thought it was a team, but, um.
There you are.
There I am.
All right.
Who's that creeping in from behind, dude?
Sheesh.
So, probably no, no great way to put this. But I guess the questions that I feel a lot of you guys are gonna get this year, probably even the next year, um, is why we West Branch are growing, but why are we having so many general fund pressures, or why are we thinking about cutting services when we're growing? Um, so I hope to answer this, um, people that are listening in, if there's something you don't understand, please ask me a question. Nick and I, our library director, are gonna work on more stories to release in the public in January, to kind of explain this stuff. I was hoping to wait a little bit longer to, to send out this information, but um, as the next line item on the council agenda, kinda notes, we kinda needed to speed it up for those purposes. And just start at the general, and we're talking the general fund. City. For our general fund, we tax at roughly eight dollars and ten cents for a thousand taxable value, not assessed value. So, Matt may live in a home that's valued at a hundred thousand, but there is what is called a rollback. So, example, this next year, it'll be fifty-six percent, so you times that fifty-six percent, times that one hundred thousand dollars that his home is worth, and we're only gonna tax him on fifty-six thousand dollars. So a lot of times, when the state's making changes, a lot of times, it's to that rollback. And it's not necessarily, that's where it, it, it messes, messes with us, it changes us. Uh, just kinda go over general fund, you know, generally, it's your most flexible expense, for the most part, you can spend it how you want, but generally, almost every city is gonna prioritize fire, police, library, city office, parks and rec, and culture, which would be your celebrations, or, um, you can even kinda throw economic development in that, in that little section. That is the general fund, and what we're talking about mainly is the general fund. What makes West Branch so different? Charts on the left are just all Iowa State University research, um, general fund on the, or revenues on the left, expenses are on the right. The top graphs are the state, the middle graph are cities similar to our size, and the bottom graph is us. So the two things to note with our revenue is we rely very heavily on property taxes, even compared to other cities our size, so when there's a change in a rollback, it's gonna affect us more than others. The second one that we get, get quite a bit of revenue in on is charges for services. The reason why we're higher is we are growing faster than most communities, so if somebody's doing a, a development. We generally charge our attorney, or our engineer fees to them, not attorney. Our engineer fees. Why should, you know, two thousand people pay for a private developer's cost that they, they put on us, so that's why we essentially will charge the developers, um, those engineering fees. So there are two things just to note in general, we'll dig into this a little bit more, budget time, um, as to the why. Um, when we look at expenditures, pretty similar, except for, believe it or not, we spend more on culture and recreation, that would include, and Heidi can correct me, but that would include library, that would include Hoover hometown days, Christmas pass, uh, library, parks and rec. Uh, I'm sure there's another thing or two I'm missing in there, Heidi. Um, contrary to the belief, I know we don't have a community center, we don't have a pool. Um, but the dollars we spend on, say, a celebration, when we talk a little bit more about fireworks, spending forty-five thousand dollars a year in fireworks, that could have funded the revenue gap in a pool. So, just kinda wanna note that, and then do a little bit more on public works, and that's fine, I know we kinda, we generally prioritize that a little bit more in West Branch. The one we are lower on is general government, that is your city office, that is your building inspections, that is your attorney. Um, so if there's one area that we can point to, that we are probably on a per dollar basis, is doing really well, but given the growth pressures we have, is what we would. Is what we would call our general government. Can't see the source, but Nick did this, Nick Schimman from library IT director. I, he's got a great graduate school background. I feel like I'm not the only one that should be doing all these graphs and tables. Um, we're very lucky to have Nick. He did his own study. On two things, this is one of them that he did, he wanted. Just kinda to point out where our current property tax is. He ranked it by state, and he can correct me, but I think there's like nine hundred certified cities. Um, give or take, so yes, we are in the upper third when you're talking about. Um, property tax rates. In general. Um, but when you're talking about what I would call. Cities that have maybe. Higher infrastructure needs, or more projects going on, as you can see, we're probably somewhere in the middle, just below. Middle where we're sitting. And this is my, my plug, um, I know Rogers use this, um, talking point quite a bit. In terms of. You know, state legislature. You know, and I'll repeat this here, and public needs to know this as well. The state was founded on local choice first. There are other states in this country that unless the state tells you you can do something, you cannot do it. State of Iowa, we can do it. But now as. Things have progressed, there's been more and more laws that have been passed. So to kinda, you know, really what happened to the school, or I mean, what happened to local choice, it's been diminished over time. City cannot raise taxes on the general fund, eight dollars and ten cents is the cap. Um, cities cannot raise taxes for police and fire unless they form a multi-jurisdictional area, so when we're talking, you know, the fifth. Police officer situation. Unless we joined with like Tipton, like Mount Vernon and Lisbon do. We cannot raise taxes for police. Um, even then, it's still capped. Um, and Heidi verified all this information, talking to the Department of Management. Again, cities cannot raise taxes on EMS issues, they are not considered essential at the state level. The only ones that can do that are the county. Or the counties that was just passed, and it still requires a sixty percent vote, and that's still capped. Anytime we even have an option to do something, it's still capped. Um, cities cannot tax on income, schools can. Um, that's just some of the differences. Um, that, a tool that we don't have that the school has. Um, cities can ask voters to approve local option sales tax, hotel motel tax. But again, that's restricted to state requirements, and then what our local referendum say. So, um, depending on your community, some communities may have more flexible local option sales tax. That they can use, um, ours is, at the, at the moment is for, um, parks and rec. Improvements. Not for, uh, buying land for new parks, just flat out improvement. City council can generally only raise taxes for. Employee benefits, your general liability, or. Um, other types of insurances. And essential infrastructure projects like we're doing with our capital improvement. Voters. May opt. With councils passing of a resolution, may pass a referendum bonds for non-essential projects. Um, so Cubby Parks an example, you need sixty percent. So my point is, I guess our options are a little bit limited in terms of what we can do.
So we can't tax for salaries?
Part of your operational expenses, obviously. You know. Yep. And then with.
Necessarily, I mean, they. Like we make water paper water, sewer paper sewer, and then they divvy up the percentage of, uh, so they're getting it out of revenue too.
Correct, correct, so yeah, depending on the position, it's. It's shared, their time is shared between these. These buckets. Um, one things I guess I read from time to time, or I get a comment on is. You know, my water rate's so high, but you know, I can't, I can't fix. You know, there's a pothole in front of my street, those are two completely unrelated things, and I haven't had a good comment about. You know, even the, say the fireworks vote tonight is. Well, I'd rather just pay for, say. Leaves, or I'd rather just pay for, um, brush pickup. But that won't solve our general fund problem. That comes out of the streets budget, and there's no way the state of Iowa's gonna let us use street money on fireworks. So. It just, I think just remember, it's more complicated, this is a little bit of my hierarchy, your fire slash, you know, your general fund. You can use general fund to help streets and water. And your sewer. But you can't go up. And you can go down and help projects down at the bottom. You can't take money from projects, give them the water and general fund. So sometimes there's a little bit confusion, um, you know, you can say we have X amount of dollars in our bank account, but it's divided between. You know, twenty of these buckets. And to kinda get into the, the nitty gritty. Of really what's going on. Um, tax cuts. At, I guess, both levels. Um, between the state and passing of, of previous city policies. Um, have had an effect. I'll give you a little bit of a timeline of what's happened. And why it's happened so slowly, and why it just seems like. Not everyone exactly knows what's going on. But twenty thirteen, state passed some property tax cuts. State promised to backfill that lost revenue. Because they knew it was gonna affect cities. They came in here, they talked to your predecessors, and they said, we're always gonna backfill this. I'm pretty sure that's recorded. Twenty fifteen, uh, the West Branch Tax Abatement Program, I know Roger wants to talk to, about this a little bit more in length with the council. Um, and I'll give you a study I did in grad school. That's relatable, not exact, but relatable to the program we have here in West Branch. Um, I'm guessing, I estimated fifty-five thousand we'd give out in rebates this year. We are right on pace to give out fifty-five thousand in rebates. Um, Heidi will do a, a little bit bigger of a study for us. Um, but when she did initial numbers, roughly, the city spent roughly seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. In new property incentives, that includes waiving permits, that includes. Giving back remates, that includes. Uh, connection, water, sewer connection fees, all that stuff. So obviously, we're not doing all that anymore, we're just doing the rebates, but, um, I'll have Heidi give you the more in-depth numbers, so you can kinda see what's going on there. And twenty seventeen, that backfill got froze at the twenty fifteen level, which equals about a ten thousand dollar a year cut. This past. Legislature passed. Part of the mental health bill, health bill from the state was funded. Through the backfill they've been getting, so that is being phased out. I wanna say it's not a hundred, but it's like ninety-two thousand, close to a hundred thousand dollars a year we get in backfill. From that twenty fifteen cap. Or I think, yeah, so the most current state. They pass what they call the biggest tax cut in Iowa history, I put that in parentheses because. It's just a number, not necessarily a percentage. But they passed it very fast, there were public meetings at the state, at the state house. Um, stating, from the Iowa Department of Management. That they were unsure how that would affect cities. Um, so their advice to me, and to Heidi, and to Leslie in our meeting, is we have no idea how this is going to affect you. Um, just for the sake of trying to help figure it out. Um, I'll ask you guys to. Who owns commercial properties here in town? Raise your hand. Jerry, do you or no? Yep. Why are you, Pete? And you guys count multiple commercial properties. Um, I'm assuming. Um, how many of you that raised your hand applied for the state's yearly tax credit program? It's always been available. So, the state, what they're doing with this tax credit program. Is they are no longer making it a credit, and then only X amount of businesses get it. Now it's a, everyone gets it, and nobody has to apply. And so, that's why. The League of Cities or Department of Management can't say to West Branch, here's how much you're gonna lose. Cause they don't know which individual ones. Have applied for this program or not, they have no idea. Um. All I, all I know is based on their recommendations, and I did the calculations too. Roughly, the first one hundred and fifty thousand dollars of a commercial building will get taxed at. Residential rates, so fifty-six, it'll be at fifty-six percent rollback. Commercial has typically been ninety percent. And so that equals about five hundred dollars. If you do five hundred dollars times the sixty commercial properties. That is under the county's database for us, it equals thirty thousand. I don't know how much of that, for sure, we're gonna get back in backfill. But that's gonna get phased out over time. That was flat out a Department of Management. Talking point. We don't know if this is, this, this backfill's gonna last you three years. We don't know exactly, because it just how hard it is to figure that out. Um, and then due to that twenty thirteen tax cut, there was still more that's kinda slowly trickling in. So there would no longer be a multi-residential tax rate. It had a different rollback calculation, over the years, it's gone down and down and down, and now it's. Flat out the same as residential. So, it'll be at, go from sixty-three percent to fifty-six percent, based on the county's inventory. That's about. A twelve thousand dollar cut in our general fund revenue. Um, total estimated reduction in revenue due to tax cuts this year is two hundred and twenty-four thousand, I wanna make this clear. We're still growing. Property. Values are still going up, we still have new properties. So it's not like it's gonna be what we got last year minus two hundred and twenty-four thousand, it's, we could be at. With all of our growth, we could be at two hundred and twenty-four thousand more revenue dollars. Go a little bit into expenses, what's going on with inflation, I, I talked to you quite a bit about that last meeting. With some of those changes, I wanna remind you that last year. Our general fund, what we get from specifically in property taxes. Only increased by fifteen thousand. I imagine that'll be bigger this year. Um, just because that's, all the, as these things get phased out, some years it's gonna hit us worse. But expenses went up six percent, roughly sixty thousand, just inflation alone, so we cut back last year. Add eighty thousand on top of that sixty thousand this year. Um. I do wanna note that some governmental services. Are gonna be going up higher than that eight percent inflation rate. And obviously, we have limited fire department and EMS volunteerism. Um, that has led to us trying out in on-call. Um, paid policy where it's three members on-call. Depending on how much certifications they are, it's either twenty or twenty-five bucks they get. So roughly around thirty thousand, so roughly. Um, a hundred and seventy thousand dollars is being increased in expenses. So, what I mean by less effective dollars. If you add those two up, it means we have three hundred and ninety-four thousand of less effective dollars if these things weren't going on. Inflation, the tax cuts. We get it, that's what we're handed. We're having growth, so we're not gonna just, it's not gonna be. You're not gonna like see three hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars, you know, from one budget to the next. Again, some of these are just hit, have been hitting us, um, slowly over time. Um. And then in average, just to give you an idea, fire department, generally their expenses are two hundred and fifty thousand. Police, three hundred and ninety thousand. Uh, that just kinda gives you the scale of what. What we're looking at in terms of the changes that are hitting us this fiscal year. And they're gonna hit us the next one. And the next. Generally, what we received through the general fund property taxes alone was one point two million, so it's. You know, when I say sixty thousand here, twenty thousand here, doesn't sound like a lot, but when you add it all up and you compare it to. We actually get. Got work ahead of us in terms of how do we still provide services. I know this is mostly budget, but I don't want you to forget, this limits our choices in what we can and can't do. Um, what we call our unfunded mandates. Uh, there's that lead service line projects that are coming up that we talked about not too long ago. Obviously, you guys went through some of Heidi's reports that she has to do yearly. They're all over the place, whether it's street finance report. The county, when we got this backfill. We got these backfill dollars, they always used to spread it out for us. In terms of, this amount was commercial, this amount was from mobile homes, this amount was from single family. You know, this amount is from a multifamily. They have decided that counties, in the legislation. The way the state legislation was written. That counties are not doing that calculation anymore, so now it's Heidi and Leslie scrambling. Figure out how to do that, when we don't even receive. The revenue from the source itself. And this past spring. It has not been passed, uh, it was introduced. I tried to get the, the number of, of the bill, I'm pretty sure it's HR twenty forty. Um, and the House of Representatives at the federal level introduced legislation on reporting. Anybody that gets like bonds, has to report their finances. Which, the way it's currently written, would require us. To now report to the federal government, if that wasn't to be passed. Um, it's. It was introduced to committee, hasn't gone anywhere that, since then. Uh, but normally, when you have those conversations, a couple of years later, there's gonna be something passed that we'll be reporting. And that's gonna be a new form. That. We're gonna have to recount, and you know, a third, obviously, we have our budget. That makes the most sense for the person, you know, that generally doesn't do this every day of the year. Um, then we've got the state reporting. And now hypothetically, we could have federal reporting on top of it. So I guess, the other question is, you know, what's our way forward? I guess the advice us administrators have for our cities is reprioritizing what is the most important. New zoning regulations, I'm gonna give you an example. Uh, on the next phase here, what I kinda mean, continue our local option sales tax. Rely on your executive team. We're lucky to have as many department directors as we have, with the amount of experience that they have. It's basically me and Heidi with four years of experience. Working with. Directors that have a lot of experience, and how do we find a way to. Um, take that great advice, but also. Give them the new reality of this is, the finances that we're facing. Um, and then transition towards, I guess, what I call professional government, and what I just mean by that is. Generally, cost to run projects should break even unless excused by the appropriate board. Here's my example about innovative zoning. Um, and as the title says, you just, yet, I, I appreciate. A lot of people's enthusiasm, thinking that. You know, we can get all these things done, or we can find a way to make it work. Policies always have a pro and a con, we may be able to mitigate some of those cons. Uh, but there's always gonna be a pro and a con. And my perfect example is this, if you can't have it both ways when it comes to your streets. If you want wide roads, you want a lot of parking, you're probably not gonna get that much safety. Probably not gonna get well-maintained streets. The wider they are, faster people drive, the deeper your concrete has to be, that costs more money. Um, I did a quick. I did a quick, quick study and we'll do more of these, but I asked Dave for just the general costs of what it would do just to reconstruct a street. Based on a twenty twenty-two project he is doing for Solon. I use that information as here's what it costs basically per mile. We have roughly seventeen paved miles in West Branch. I take Matt's road use tax budget that he gets from the state. And I said, what happens if we don't have any employees? What happens if we never fill in potholes? We never raise taxes. We never class now. It would take us one hundred and thirty-two years to reconstruct all of our streets. I'm not an engineer, but my guess is unless Dave wants to chime in, my guess is that lifespan is probably seventy years. And you probably have maintenance on top of that. We're not even doing maintenance. Again, there's different behaviors going on when it comes to road use tax. It's not always necessarily a state. You have more fuel-efficient vehicles. Now you've got solar vehicles or you know, you got electric vehicles. So revenue's probably not gonna go up unless there's some sort of reform on road use taxes. So the one percent increase that we're getting from the state, the way it's gonna be until we figure out a way to combat human behavior. I don't think anybody has the perfect formula for that. But that's just assume road construction goes up by four percent because that's generally what inflation is average over time. As you can see, the longer and longer we wait, longer and longer it's gonna take to reconstruct streets. So we'll talk a little bit more about that type of financing, but just kind of wanted to point out road use tax is not in our roads. You know, you guys have to make a conscious decision in what you guys want. So are planning and zoning when I address them on those things. You guys are the elected officials. I will defend your policies, but I do want to give you the full picture as well. Local option sales tax, another study that I had connected for us. You will see this in our winter newsletter. Pretty soon, we will talk about a resolution from council to get that on the referendum. He did a study on what it would cost us or our residents' property taxes. But it would cost them if we didn't have loss and we still had, you know, Cubby Park, we still did the upgrades to the Lions Park and all that. Roughly about two dollars more for a thousand assessed for taxable value. That's roughly saving property taxes on an individual home of two hundred thousand, about twenty-two hundred dollars over that ten years. And then come to my final, just kind of the, you know, what do we do? I saw the room of the people I work with, very intelligent people, plenty of experience, but I wanted us to work together as a team. Because we all have needs and wants. So I gave them just the hypothetical scenario. There's about a hundred of these items I could have, I could have included. I just, I wanted to pick some that would, you know, really hit some departments. It was not fun for them to do, and I know that. But for us, for them to understand the choices you have to make and the choices Heidi and I have to make, I thought it was important. So I gave them, you know, you have an X amount of dollars to work with. All these items cost X amount of dollars. You pick and choose what you think are worthy of funding or not. The biggest thing, couple of biggest things that I took about it. Obviously, I don't agree with everything across the line, but when something is a hundred percent and something is zero percent, it it tells you kind of what's going on. I can tell you, I won't go into the private conversations I had with staff. I just know when the city got involved in fireworks, some of them talked to the previous administrator and councils and they did not recommend it then. And they still don't recommend it now. My vote is in there too. So you guys know where I stand on fireworks. I am one of the seven that filled those out. The only one that didn't was our police chief, just due to the number of patrol hours he's had, he has not been able to make as many Monday meetings. But he is the only one that did not fill that out. That could have changed things, but I can tell you that fireworks answer would have been this. You know, that's just where we all stand. Especially when we're talking about what's facing us ahead. What are other cities doing? I know there's some comments made about, you know, what, you know, our residents don't like the fees they're getting. And I don't disagree with that. Unfortunately, that's kind of the hand we're given. If we want to do X program, we gotta charge, we gotta capture it somehow. This is in Iowa League of Cities Utility Survey. They survey all the cities, ask us how our rates have changed last year. On average, residential went up, residential water went up one dollar to one fifty. Commercial water went up one dollar to two. Stormwater went up fifty cents, garbage fifty cents, recycling one dollar. So just giving you a heads up, we're not the only ones. If we do make rate increases, we are by far not the only ones doing this. I guess the, as I said, you guys are decision makers, but just kind of wanted to give you as big of a picture. I get it. Everybody's kind of struggling. We just kind of need to decide what our priorities are this upcoming budget. Because yeah, nobody wants to pay more in taxes. Nobody wants to pay more in the utility bill. But we also can't have seventeen free programs either. It's just, you know, we're gonna have to figure out what we want to do. In my great philosopher, Yoda says, you must unlearn what you've learned. What I mean by that is we can't assume just because we're a growing community that we're not gonna have budget pressures. And just because we've experienced limited inflation for the last forty years, doesn't mean what we did the last three years is going to be what's best for us the next three years. But in conclusion, if residents are asking you what's going on, obviously, you're not gonna be able to repeat this. But in short, revenue, yes, we are growing. There are more more properties here, but revenue is not increasing as fast as it could or it used to when say like North Liberty hit this growth that we expenses, just due to the time or the year and everything that's going on. Expenses are increasing much faster than increases in revenue. So something has to give. And what I mean by budget reconstruction, I just mean we gotta question everything to figure out what is essential for our long-term financial success. And you guys, unfortunately, it's not why you run for council. You don't run to raise rates and raise taxes and cut services. You guys just flat out in staff, we just have less flexibility in what we can do, period. That is just, I wish I could tell you something nicer, but we have limited options. Oh, I think I got through everything. Anybody that's listening or anyone in the public, if you got questions, let me know, because I really do want to help tell the story as best as I can. Everybody. I know.
Good presentation.
Thank you.
So this chart with the blue lines, zero to a hundred percent, that's, that's a survey of staff.
Correct.
Some sort of feeling on, so one hundred percent means they would
preserve it absolutely.
Try to recap into some of that.
Correct.
Okay, absorbing all that, so. Thank you, Adam.
Thank you.
Yes.
Weird.
Any questions, anybody?
Are we looking at kind of going over some of the during the budget time?
Correct. Yeah. The only reason why, again, I didn't want fireworks recommendation to come out this soon, but the reason why is our groups have to plan around that day if there's no fireworks. And then it won't be until the end of December until I get the county's numbers. So we probably won't, you know, we won't know how hard it is. I've just run, you know, just for fun, my general projections. If it increases by four percent and we, and expenses increase by eight percent, there's work to do. But I won't know the final until December.
That's a report from the audit.
Well, yeah, end of December, yeah. When we have our first budget work session, when we're and that would be my advice. I've only got three dates on you. Wouldn't surprise me if we're doing more dates than just the two.
Seems like some of the stuff we could probably start thinking about how are we gonna cut them? We know we're gonna, more likely gonna have to cut some of the stuff anyway, so. If not cut it, cut some stuff back. One thing I want to say about the housing rebates. At the time that was initiated, West Branch was pretty stagnant, no growth. We had no no look forward to any growth. At the time, it was a great program, still is.
I think we held on to it.
Maybe held on to it a little long.
Served its purpose.
Yeah, we did. I mean, we've really grown. And I'm not saying that because there, I'd say it's probably, I don't know the statistics, but I'm gonna say it's probably about fifty fifty of those that came to the city, actually knew about it. The other fifty percent had no idea, but they were glad to have it once they got there. But we'd have probably, would we end that last year, the year before about last night?
Before I got here.
But we really have about three more years of that, then we'll be done. So I just want to throw this out there and I absolutely do not want to stop this program. But if we needed to, and this is just an idea, if we can, if we would extend this, pay the same amount of payout, but just limit it to how much they get for a year. They had a thousand dollars a year, because some of these are getting two or three thousand dollars a year. If we limited it to a thousand dollars a year and just extend their payment till they get to the five thousand, that would be one way to capture some revenue off of this.
Can you change the agreement in the middle of the
Really? Thinking about it, I thought about it, but.
I'm not sure what the intent was when it first. I I did not do my research. I think maybe Leslie told me, I just forgot. I'm not sure why we can't or when someone purchases a property, I get that, you know, it's an incentive to buy a new property. But they could also, when they sell the property, that rebate goes to the new owners. I mean, I just paid out a rebate where that person or that family does not live there anymore. They now live in North Liberty and I paid, I think it's in your packets actually, if you look at it. So I I don't understand why.
It went to, it went to the profit.
But right, but I don't, that's, if we could reconsider, and this is a Kevin question, that's one thing I would reconsider is the transferring of that to the new owners. Because I don't think that that's what the intent was.
Well.
Or the incentive.
Idea was that if the builder built a spec house, we did that for a if a builder, a spec builder built the house and ended up sitting on it for over a year or so, that that would still be transferred over to the new home.
Because when we first started that, that was a real possibility. I mean, you know, when we first started that, there was like three new constructions a year was a good year.
Right.
You know, and now I have these property where it's like the third or fourth owner. Right, so.
Problem reneging on that. If if they move out of town, why, why should we pay them if they just left town?
No, they paid their taxes. They paid their September taxes.
Still replaced by another owner.
But you know, I I guess that's, that's the only point I would, maybe we could rethink that.
Their check's up like up to five thousand dollars.
Yeah. Five years from occupancy.
But so that check went to North Liberty.
Yes.
The check was sent to North Liberty, is that where they go?
Because they paid the tax and they were living in it.
Okay, so that was a, that was a past year's tax.
Right, yeah.
There, you're All right, okay. I thought they, they were trying to cash in on the rebate after they left. Okay, I'm sorry.
That's, to me, that's just one of your line items here.
And that's, yeah, that's what I meant by how do we do the moves that was, I would agree with you, I think, and so would staff. I think they, they would all agree with you. You know, we may, whether it's a legal binding or not, we made a promise to do with the program for five years. But are there some things that, you know?
We already, end of the budget. Oh, you mean talking about payout?
I think that's really bad to the city.
I know that, but it's just more of a question, like I said, if we do. No, there's no formal agreement with anybody.
Council programs improved our reservations up. Even if it wasn't, of course, you could always pass a reservation, change it.
Okay, anything else, anyone? I guess we'll talk about fireworks next. So at the last Hoover Days meeting, when was it, last week? Pretty much everybody in the room, planners of Hoover Days, thought that in the way with the fireworks would, wouldn't be a terrible idea in order to save twenty-five thousand dollars. Plans can can be made and, you know, in fire department and on Saturday night, that Saturday night, they, the fire department's empty. Because everybody stays home to watch fireworks, so. There was a little bit of an upbeat thought of maybe, well, maybe that would draw people back down at the fire station on Saturday night. Do something at the fire station. Even though we've already planned a big band on Friday night.
So this year, we're playing our big bands on Friday night?
Yeah. That doesn't mean a small band couldn't be had or or some other entertainment, a DJ Friday night.
Hey, Roger.
Who is that?
Roger, it was the consensus of the fire department that we wouldn't have anything on Fri- on Saturday night. And one of the reasons was we weren't selling the dinners, number one. Number two, we weren't getting the crowds. And number three, most importantly, we don't have the people to set up and clean up And, and shut the fire station down. We, we don't get out of there till two, three o'clock in the morning, so I don't know how far, how much. Leg, legs that opening up Saturday night, the fire department would have.
Yeah, and what I just said was before your fireman's meeting. On that Wednesday, Wednesday ago, I believe. So that's, that's news, that's good to hear. What your thoughts are there, what the fire department thoughts are. So what are our thoughts on fireworks?
Most of the consensus I've heard is.
I don't know if this would be a one or two or three year thing, or then pick it up again.
I know, we had this conversation a couple of years ago, we almost canceled it. I mean, I remember the being an uproar about, about that, so I had, and just to say, I had higher hopes that. Because of that, we would have seen more. Donations, for as much as people had to have them. It hasn't been an uptick at all. So as far as I'm concerned. I mean, saying one thing and doing stuff is a different thing. To me, it was a lot of sort of talk. From a good chunk of the community that they want them so bad, blah, blah, blah.
We wonder if they don't talk to them.
Yeah, so I'm kind of at the point where it's. I think we've proved the point the last couple of years that. Fair amount of just.
You wanna throw out too, when I first got here, I did warn people that it was a possibility, this would be a discussion in hopes that we would get more in donations.
Well, you almost can't, we tried to cancel it before you even got here. And. So even then, I mean, it's almost been a couple of times now, we've said, hey, we're gonna do away with these, and people are upset, and then we, we don't see an uptake, so. I'd be a little bit more hesitant to say no fireworks if the donations actually change. But they haven't.
When did the city actually take over the thing? Didn't they used to be doned, money donated there?
Like twelve or thirteen or?
I've been here, at least, well, I would say probably twelve or thirteen, maybe even earlier. But we paid for it as long as I've been here.
At least when it was on the book, it was fiscal year twenty thirteen.
Okay.
I think my first year I was here was when we had the big blow up. With the foundation.
It's been twelve, it's been thirteen, we did it all.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, paying a lot of that on forty thousand dollars. Really?
I've asked people, my goat, their brains, most people think it's still the foundation.
I mean, some people think it's even a life or, you got national government.
He's paying for it all.
You lost Fed's money.
Yeah, I mean, I think somebody asked and said, oh, it's no big deal, it's federal money. Like, I don't know, I've heard that several times, people said, I don't know what the big deal is, it's federal money. Like, no, it's not.
I still have people who donate to the foundation, who think that that's what their money's going for. It's going for something different.
I'm not very sure, I think we've proved enough to mean that people don't want them that bad.
I think there's other cuts need to happen at Hometown Days too, though. This is just the beginning, it's not. Not the final cut. I mean, you know, if we're hurting that bad, you know, paying somebody five hundred dollars to paint a kid's face, or, you know, eight thousand dollars for them to jump around in a. Puppy thing full of air, I mean, you know.
Well, we may cut that down to eight thousand, that may be our.
We did talk about it being lower, so it wasn't just, yeah.
We pay fifteen hundred dollars so they can watch dogs catch frisbees and stuff like that, I mean, you know. This isn't the only waste here in this. In this basket.
Don't know how it could be watered down a whole lot more. It's a work in progress, though.
What do you mean, watered down a whole lot?
Well, I guess.
One of these fireworks. No, and I think that's, we need to just get out of that business.
Bother me.
We're, we're not in the fundraising business, we're in a taxing business.
Yeah, nobody wants to.
And we do this quite well.
So I'm hearing from three or four of you.
At least part of the world, stuff that people actually, like, almost wash. All the stuff that's up top is the stuff that the city pays six thousand dollars for and doesn't get any back. Everything else, like a wash or.
I mean.
You have to pay for it to do it.
To me, the dream scenario would be, you know, we do a parade, we provide the toilets. The garbage around here, we maybe do some concerts at the fire departments, cause that's going to give us revenue back as a city, you know, to help fund our, our fire department. You know, and the rest of this stuff ought to be the community. And the businesses having the type of celebration they want. You fi- you know, you figure out how to make money. It shouldn't be a. It shouldn't be something that's almost, you know, solely funded by the city.
I don't know the park service and Hoover Foundation's money, but I do know, I think we're probably the biggest giver, but I do know.
But that's spent in, that's spent in their, in their property. He can't come spend something on Main Street, you know?
I think it's important that he.
Don't go, he'll be jailed.
Unless he buys a lottery.
Right attached to the historic district.
Yeah.
Fact, I think the street right there is yours, so I don't.
He was there for a while, but. City started picking up, yeah. He didn't have as much of a, I mean, as long as I've been here, our downtown has never been more robust, as far as. Businesses to actually kind of take some of the mantle and do what they want to do compared to. When Adam and I graduated high school fifteen years ago, downtown was. Two or three things, really?
Should've been here in the eighties.
Oh, I know. But I mean, but then the city started picking up a lot of the bill at that point, cause there wasn't anybody downtown that we had to. Pick up the mantle and run with it about how they wanted to see it. Now we have a little bit more, we have a nice. Back in the day. Semi permanent director. CDG that does a great job, I mean. Might be time the city pulls back a little bit of business.
Back in the day, we had two festivities, Hoover, Hoover Days and Hometown. Well, two different.
Yeah, I can't see going back to that.
No, I'm not saying back to that history, cause we were. If I could, just to throw in a little bit about what does happen. The park provides activities that are more historic, obviously, they have some type of educational component to them. So providing, you know, bringing, bringing a reenactor from Minnesota. Bringing a guy from New Jersey a couple of years ago, cost money, we paid for the dogs that caught frisbees. Thought they were pretty cool, actually. You know, the library, what's that?
Pretty cool.
Oh, the Dean Martin group.
The Dean Martin, well, that was a partnership with us and the city too, remember? We, we split that, so. At that time, we had a federal financial partnership agreement in place, and. The library has a symposium all day long, so they've got eight hundred people in their auditorium throughout the day, not at one time, but, you know, and so that kind of fits a. Component of, you know, folks that wanna actually focus on Hoover. And then, of course, I mean, Jessie's online, I won't speak for her, but I think she, she would probably tell us that the folks that come to downtown. Come and revisit, so there's a lot of benefit to Hometown Days, but I agree, there's probably room in things out or work on stuff. Bet you could climb, like mountain climbing.
Yeah. Little creativity is all we're asked, help papers.
So back to fireworks, I think I'm hearing from at least three or four of you that. You're not gonna be hurt by cutting fireworks. I mean, five, maybe all five of it. Well, that's.
Every day is their consensus.
Very sure I voiced my opinion.
Yeah, you have. Okay, I think that's our consensus on the fireworks, so. During the planning in that regard.
Put it out there that we were not gonna have fireworks. Some different people get together and do layups and.
Has to be done by. January.
Oh, you'd be surprised. They, they say that because they're trying to lean on a city, but I'm telling you, if you showed up. Pretty much before that with a pile of money, I'll bet fireworks would happen.
Considering the time of the year, not the fourth of July.
The thing is, as much as this whole event has started to die. I, I'm. Very disappointed in our community. This all started many years ago. Long before. I was probably even around, but. Over fifty years ago, I remember being a little kid. And having carnival rites up and down Main Street, actual carnival rites. Like West Liberty Fair has. I don't know how they got paid for it. Believe me, I was way too young then. But the fire department took on the mail and stuff to give back to the community. As an appreciation for everything that the community had given to the fire department and support. Over time. The support is still there, but it seems like for this celebration, it's not. It's a good thing. That we have this celebration, but I think it needs to go down to one day. The community isn't back in two days' worth of celebration. I think it could go down to Saturday event. And be done with it. Unfortunately.
All right, let's move on, so. Adam's got some strategic planning worksheets, it looks like.
Yes, so. Fill them out for our next meeting and we'll. Talk about them. I think it's stuff that you guys should think about over the next two weeks. There's obviously stuff that staff and commissioners have filled out. I've included past conversations I've had with you. On items, if I forgot something, sorry. I tried to make mental notes on everything, or, you know, common things I've heard from the public, I've included. Then I also included our last strategic goals. From last year. What I'm hoping to do, now that I make, wrangled up all my papers. The one that I don't want. Cute looking one from, one that Jamie Tucker did for us. What I'm hoping for is, as we're going through these, these tough times, is to have the board here in council. Of our strategic plan. Something that's a whiteboard that we can change every year. Basically, if it's in our strategic plan, we need to find a way to fund it. If it's not. Then certainly someone can come to council and make their argument, but we should wait until next December and rediscover it. Unfortunately. We don't have the resources that we used to, so I think it'd be a good tool for us to say yes, present on what you want. We'll consider it in December, it being on our strategic plan, and if it makes it, it makes it, if it doesn't. That is often what larger cities do, because you have like three staff members that are. You know, it's all they do, it's budget and capital improvement financing, because that's how much stuff they have to deal with, so. I guess I see it as a tool to help all of us, including staff, get done when we need to. When we have limited resources. Could be anything you guys want, urgent, obviously, we'll go at the top. I'm hoping to have. Just a list of us to remind us what we're really trying to accomplish each year. And if you can see, not everything is huge, that all the partners gave you. No one was overly ambitious.
So you wanted us to pick, say it from?
I'm just giving you examples, yep, completely from your own. Talk about it. Our next meeting.
So I saw that one was color coded. Did red mean out?
Urgent.
Urgent, okay, that was been seen in city office. Principal responsibility, nothing we're out.
You're throwing it out to my neighbor, done with that.
I didn't give Jamie too much feedback, I just wanted at least something as an example for you guys to see, but she felt that red meant we need to do it, you know, as soon as possible.
City, I'm telling you, also.
Quick update on the Green Street, Street property, uh. Hill Bank is actually for closing on the house, so we have an agreement that we would let them take the house instead of having us take the house. So we're, we didn't dismiss our, our judgment or anything, I guess, and we were just waiting to make sure they go through with it.
Time frame? What kind of timeframe were?
Well, depends on.
Three months?
Three years, yeah. I gotta find him. But we did, and we served a week. That's, we have to publish notice, but the bail. They said they.
They've done it. Um, Dave Scheckinger, you have anything to add?
A few updates for you. The Roundabout Project is advertised to bid on December thirteenth, that's a Tuesday at nine AM. So we should have information back mid-December on that. The wastewater plant project, they continue to work on the UV building and some structures for the Sager, and removing sludge from the east cell. The stream widening project, Impact Seven G has finished the fieldwork for archaeology, wetlands delineation and stream assessment, and they're finishing up three ports for those items. We're also working with them to try to get the plans ready for a review with SRF folks and IDALS. For the sponsored project application, or requirements. DOT sent in a permit request recently for additional soil borings for the work under the bridge over the old railroad near Gascals. And once they have that information, they should be able to come up with a reasonable solution to the settlement issues we discussed previously. And we would be able to finish our utility relocation once that's complete. The east side water main project, we continue to work on getting the plans ready, we'll review on that as well, and submit those to DNR as soon as they're in shape to do that. Anybody have any questions for me?
Dave, I have one, downstream.
Dave, I have one, um, downstream flooding, what would be your estimate on putting it out for bids?
We are working through a process with, uh, the SRF folks on this that is pretty lengthy, I would suspect we're probably looking at, uh, late winter, early spring.
Sounds reasonable.
Alright, Dave, thank you. City staff, anyone? Man, they have. They blowing, they pick up one more week?
Yeah, I'm next.
That's it.
Say lights next week too, huh?
Uh, well, coming into four tomorrow, we get down down.
Fifty-five degrees on Wednesday.
Um, are there lights for the town hall? For Christmas past? Okay.
We doing the Christmas tree this year, we lighting that up, or is that on the buddy?
Didn't make the last meeting, where are we at? No, it's a no.
We have a special.
Oh.
So, um, the tree is getting harder, the light, it's harder to get the right people with the right lifts anymore, and, uh, Main Street would have needed to purchase six hundred feet of new lights to do it this year. The tree is dying, slowly thinning out in places, so the park service is probably going to move forward with taking it down and planting a replacement tree.
Guys, you just wait till they fall down, you.
Yeah, well, I ran earth movers over the park a couple of years ago, and nobody said a word, but if I take that tree down, I'm afraid I'm gonna be run out of town, so. So, um, so what we have done, uh, I reached out and, uh, Dan Hob, actually on his own, independent of knowing this, purchased an old wagon, a historic looking wagon that needed to be rebuilt. And it fits with the time period of the park, and he rebuilt it, and, uh, we're going to place that at the corner and decorate it with swag and lights, put a tree in the back, if it's nice enough, we'll load it with presents, fake, nothing. There will be nothing in the boxes. Um, and and, uh, make it look like it's a wagon full of Santa Claus presents, and so we're gonna light up the wagon instead, and it's very generous of Dan to get that wagon done for us, and it's yard art that he's donated, so it's for let us use for the event, so be different, hopefully be a lot of fun.
Staff, anyone else? That's a no. Uh, mayor and council, I only have one thing on, I gave you guys on November twenty-ninth, it's next Tuesday, the Lower Cedar Water Management Authority is having an open house to present the, uh, man- water management plan. I don't know much about it, but it's been worked on, they've hired someone to do it. So I'd love it if people could make it November twenty-ninth at five thirty to town hall. So put this on your refrigerator and hopefully I'll see you there, we may not see each other since then, so before that, I mean. That's all I have, anybody else, anything?
Don't move.
All local people say aye?